Right, I just mean rather than.
That's not a good answer from me to you.
Right.
What I'll do when I'm planning out with Gary tomorrow what's happening, I will check, see if I can accomplish.
Okay.
Good question, I heard that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, you're on the later update. I'm calling in on the later, Daniel Rupa, I'm the testing manager. So if you've seen what your plan, seen the analysis of the sewer stuff going on today, I mean, you could update on the overall project. And what we can try and do is maybe clear tonight or improve tonight for the process. Uh, as we look at everything with the sewer projects going on with the pages of this, this open sewer, um, they just coming to close. We've added delay, uh, the CPI services trying to move a totally line on the last run. They pretty much have it in town, approximately seven hundred feet back there. We are, it's also kind of pushing down more and have the motion down the bottom to give them an extension of time until September thirty. The reason for that is the delay in movement of utilities to the last of sewer done. If I don't clean up all fences and everything else that I didn't clean up, and high end also the water maintenance extension project. Those two go at the same time of completion for all the pavement restoration that's going on. So right now, they're in a small sidewalk that is trying to clean up, trying to get roads ready. And they're getting ready to get all the terminal access on, so trying to clean up or clean up on the next quarter. Move on to, um, the lead service line that you guys are seeing here. There was a, um, there was a change order that has been due, there's people other lead services that have been tackled. A few more corporations, the services remain unconnected, trying to balance the budget within. We are already among the stats, you know, the, uh, the additional here. So if we're, if we sign, uh, overall bill, people see the cost that adjusted to break down. About a thousand five hundred seventy million dollars, addition, probably six, six or seven thousand dollars. Balancing, like, make your things become, what is happening here. Then, not going in, there's a lot of destruction or any other work, so trying to use the manager, what's about to happen. The, um, rest of this, we have, um, coming through both. Water treatment plant, we're getting started, I guess, with the water treatment plant. They can come along nicely, they have a ground, the operations starting on their word. So we should stay in the background by, uh, the bond, secondly, because it starts to walk off, or like, start those holes. Moving very long in that, thanks, sir, we're starting to know that we need to, uh, change this. A little time, say, for major, sanitary sewer, which, like I said earlier before, if I had extra digits, I'd be the best contractor, best engineer in the world. So we've had a few changes, and people like to hear, um, this, they move the budget, they're, they're here, a few change orders. During the end of questions, as far as the expression, we've had, I'll get back.
Sure.
Get back to, uh, the change orders.
So if we, if we extend both these projects in June, end of June, end of September, is that likely going to push back the road repairs to new project?
No, no.
Or they in a, is that?
This is completion is in the third.
Right. Cause they, so by, it was supposed to be by the end of June, and they were kind of one to do, done something, it's kind of moving all of them at once. So we're gonna have to make two trips. Is that likely gonna push that back to September now?
No, no, for both these, we're doing all of the road repairs, everything done, I think, we were right, the sanitary sewer. And the water maintenance engine all at the same time. It was primarily due to the part of extension of the sewer, movement of utilities, trying to prevent the final number of work. They're preparing to go back, they're not having enough policy. It's already down, it's the order around now, they're ready to go back, I mean, that.
So, yeah, so basically, road projects, you may get back to fall. Time wise, I'm not worried about.
Time, time wise, yes.
You guys, you guys are planning on the oil and char at, at that time of the final service, and then the people can get ready.
So we have a couple of spots that we're gonna make through the summer. One of them was first, they were gonna start, you know, some of them next year, is the sort of, you know.
They, they still are in it, on some of the areas where you guys have done to come out, and made it out. Some of the areas that were, of course, there's merit of the, of the, of the, right, and that was, uh. Where did, until the, uh, extra part, uh, reporting to, on the south, on South Chesapeake, also, there's a lot of high end there. And that's pretty, there's some, okay, it's made from this, because I'm just, uh, the cost of, uh, to, uh, to develop, all the zero, that was, uh, the, the.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, it does not have.
Because of the timeline?
No, it doesn't, it, all it is to just ask you for a station time, uh, the other permit does not impact, either money or, or anything like this.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, they went to the sewer, went down, went down, and we, they got it last month. And, and then that, and, and there, there was, like, love.
Starting the side wall?
Yeah. And pretty well all of it.
Your house, or? What was it, street, the, the street? Right now?
Wow. Out there are, so, so, then it's, it's in power.
Say it all.
Teacher.
If you tell the future for guys who are remaining.
I just need to have stress on the front. I don't need to take.
Poor Peterson.
Definitely, definitely give you something to watch, cause it's kind of like that.
Isn't that?
I'm worried. If you take care of it, that is, that is no problem. No problem at all. Is there anyone else with any questions, or?
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, motion approved at invoice of sewer. Peterford plumbing dispersment, hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine, and eighty-six cents. Jastine's invoice, seven thousand eight hundred forty dollars and fifty-two cents, total. Hundred thirty, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars and thirty-six cents. Hey, roll call.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Nelson? Porter? Yeah. Bradshaw? Walden?
Yeah.
Palmer?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved sewer change order, thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Okay, roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yeah.
Walden? Porter? Yeah. Palmer?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved invoice of water treatment plant. Murphy plumbing dispersment, hundred sixty-seven thousand, fifty-one hundred and one dollars and seventy-three cents. Jastine invoice, thirty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Total, two hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and six cents. Hey, roll call.
Porter? Walden?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Nelson?
Okay, motion approved invoice of water lead service line. Piersburg plumbing dispersment, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Jastine invoice, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Total, forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Hey, roll call.
Palmer?
Yeah.
Bradshaw?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yeah.
Porter? Walden?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Here, motion approved the change order of water lead service. Thirty-eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Hey, roll call.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Nelson? Palmer?
Yeah.
Porter? Yeah. Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve change order of time extension, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for sewer project area.
Basically, because of E T I.
And our additional, that, 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 that.
Roll call.
Walden?
Yeah.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Porter? Palmer? Nelson? Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved final budget ordinance of fiscal year. Oh, motion to approve change order of time extension to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for water main project. Motion extended. Okay. Roll call.
Sullivan?
Yeah.
Nelson?
Yeah.
Porter? Yeah. Bradshaw?
Yeah.
Walden?
Yeah.
Palmer?
Motion to approve the final budget ordinance. Final budget ordinance of fiscal year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. What'd you say?
Order to do the six.
Eight thirty-six. Hey, roll call.
Porter? Yeah. Walden?
Yeah.
Palmer? Sullivan? Bradshaw?
Yes.
Nelson?
Motion to approve sidewalks, eighteen thousand dollars.
We need still bid on that. Is there a price that we gotta get still bid when you do some free work, or, everybody's a three? You know, we?
He doesn't, um, do the still bids, um, cause that's the best rate. He has, like, one company that he works with, that he pays with, or whatever, it doesn't have to be bid out unless you go over a certain amount.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
I, I really, I don't know, I'm pretty happy why it was only four bids.
Aren't these, shouldn't we be getting, uh, certificate insurance from? People are doing work for the city, but they have something happen.
Yeah.
We've never got certificate of insurance. I asked Eric about it a long time ago, and he's in that board. We may not have a certificate of insurance or anything from these people.
I'll say something there, and we can do it.
And they need to be, we need to be listed as, like, a challenge for the insurance. I think so.
It's like, if you have work done on your house, and you make sure they're insured, and you're buying.
Well, I know when I worked for the construction company, after their four and a half years, we had to be listed.
They have to have certain insurance before you do work.
Right.
That way, if somebody gets hurt when they're cutting a tree, or putting a sidewalk in, the city doesn't have to cover their hair.
Oh, I'll say something there, and see.
Almost business.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
But we still.
Be, hey buddy, come pull a sidewalk, and next thing they know, it's, they're liable for them to get hurt.
Yeah, we are, but, 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 so I'm pretty sure you probably should be listed as a dish insurance.
I think they don't, it's every customer, they're under insurance. I think it was just have to have.
I mean, when we did the, when we did it fair, we have to do a, a city assumption of a dish insurance. We can't, we can't do that to you, when we have to list a city assumption of the dish insurance on our policy.
Is that what you, so you probably, you could, there's?
No.
You're still working.
Excuse me. If that covers the city or any other entity, they have to exhaust the insurance from the contractor first before they consider paying. That's why she's asking for that.
You can require them to provide, that there's insurance, we can require them to have carrying some amount. Like, if you tell them if it's not enough, you need to have this amount. I just, I just hope my father says he's gonna recognize, or something, that he had, back then, it's like a million dollars you have to carry.
I don't want them to have. Over so much amount, that you, you, this is a ditch insurance. And you, and the, obviously, as you're, the most best for your, your, so, it's a large sum volume, while you're doing, you're standing a long distance. As for your burn, it's best for your your city is it's a large sum volume where you're going to stand a long distance throughout your county. Some of them smaller, short. They will require they can't charge them. They can't do this. They just want to allow them to charge up to a certain amount. Larger they're gonna have to have in the life of others for the city.
Right, yeah.
I would give that. The city order currently provided is. Actually require them to. Or for the. Three of the board larger contract more actually.
Yes.
Definitely it's. Five thousand, two thousand three contract probably.
Yes, as long as we have a copy of the insurance. We're gonna figure out the amount, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, motion approved trees eight thousand dollars. Okay.
Palmer.
Yeah.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Porter.
Yeah.
Walden. Sullivan.
Yes. Hey, motion to hire our animal control officer. Like trees.
Trees.
Motion approved trees eight thousand dollars.
Oh, there it goes. They're hard. Have they already been identified yet or we just?
Yeah, he's got he's got his list down.
Okay.
This is all the trees we've been looking for a whole year?
Hopefully, considering, I mean, it's all depends on storms. You know, if storms come up and we have to cut trees down, but this is just the list of the trees that he has so far that he's wanted to do this summer.
What have the trees set are on the old school?
Little bit city property.
What have the hills? Who I hope for that one.
Have you? I don't even know if anybody's talked to you over the last year.
No, I talked to Derek age.
Somebody just borrowed it from the school again and asked Monday to. Just put it over in office. So are there anything on that?
I feel they're covering the issue. It just leaves my. Well, then I have to. Sue them.
Sue the trees. I'll make the motion to approve the tree eight thousand dollars.
Hey, roll call.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yeah.
Porter.
Yeah.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yeah. Motion to hire animal control officer.
Do we have?
Yes, we have somebody. Uh. Jimmy Rook is gonna he's gonna do it after he gets off work and he'll be on call. You call him anytime through the day. And uh he'll come out and gets off work and take care of the animal. I think he'll work that pretty.
He'll do that one.
Who is it? Jimmy Rook.
Jamie.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to hire Jamie Rook as our local co-officer.
Roll call.
Walden.
Yeah.
Sullivan. Porter. Palmer.
Yeah.
Nelson. Bradshaw.
Yes. Okay, motion to amend change of golf cart ordinance.
This is just about the committee meeting. It's just the date of the stickers for um one year. They have issuance will expire March thirtieth and then whenever they buy them, they buy them from March to March of the next year will expire. That made sense. Every sticker's gonna expire March thirtieth and all issue new ones that are from one year that they purchased.
Pro rate or or anything like that you play to, you know, either June thirtieth, June thirtieth or whatever.
Yeah, so.
Or are they any kind of pro rate or one flat rate or?
It's just one flat rate till fifty dollars. Like you buy it in June of twenty, let's say June of twenty-five. They approved this. It'll go till March thirtieth to twenty-six. By December twenty-five, it'll go to March thirtieth. That's about June of March thirtieth. That answer your question?
Yep.
That was the only thing that was changed on that.
So someone if someone buys one, she's supposed to play it on the front, but you know, like, so if they put one month.
They do what? You said again.
Like if they buy it, say they buy it in January or February, they don't play it or don't drive it.
So all the stickers for two thousand twenty-five will expire. Now, if they wanna come buy a sticker for next year, whenever I get them in, I'll I'll post, but you know.
In March.
Yeah, we'll let everybody know.
Buy in March, even if they buy the.
Yes.
The golf cart in January.
Yep. Yeah, they buy a twenty twenty-six sticker in January. I'm trying to have them by January, February, every year depending on the distributor. Uh guy in Edinburgh makes them. But they buy the twenty twenty-six sticker in January. It's not gonna expire till twenty-seven, if that makes sense.
I'll make the.
Well, not actually on the ordinance of the place, but. On the golf cart, it's gonna take hours of driving. Can we? I mean, I think that should be changed. If you're gonna treat us like we're driving and we're here, well, then we should be able to drive the golf cart anytime we want.
I I don't disagree with you. That was just in place. I've had one person mention it and me and Donnie just talked about it right before the meeting. Um, I don't have an issue with it. I I'm with you on that if they're paying um, you know, for the price of golf carts. We're treating it as as a vehicle and they have to buy all the same rules. I know that was in place. I talked to Derek. That was in place where Derek got here. Um, I don't have an issue with it. I. Ultimately, it'd be up to you guys, but we're at the table this one. So we're not admitting the ordinance twice. Just do it all at once.
Yeah.
Um.
When it ends due.
Six six A to ten P M.
Do they require?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That lets turn signals, wheels. That was. Golf carts are but they're so dang quiet.
They're quieter than a car.
So.
I mean, mine's really quiet.
And like I said, they, you know.
On the car.
They're probably not.
They have to follow the rules of the road and they're subject to the same traffic violations. You know, I mean, they're every turns, you know, they're any traffic or crash. If you commit a vehicle, you can commit on a golf cart and they which stayed in the ordinance, so. Um, I don't have an issue with you know, ultimately, stuff you guys, but if we're gonna do that, we need to just, I don't know, we can table this. However, just changing it once instead of twice.
Yeah, I mean. I don't really have like, I don't know where the language would be. There's a basic change right side, so.
Yeah, I don't have.
Bring in something nice.
I don't have it from either, but I don't, like I said, I don't see an issue. They've been brought up a couple times, so. Yeah.
What about?
No, I don't think it was second.
What about children that were young that should be in a car seat in a regular vehicle or hanging on to the golf carts?
There's no seat belts in most of these golf carts. Um, the ordinance doesn't state. They just have to be in a seat. If your golf cart fits four, you're only four people on the golf cart.
But you know, it's a little taller and.
I mean, I get it. It's one of those things that none of these golf carts come as uh.
And drinking and driving.
Cannot drink and drive. Same same rules, the plot of the road, and I guess minus the seat belt, because they're not equipped with seat belts.
Not to interrupt or anything. Sorry, not to interrupt or anything, but I will just say I've got a four-month-old daughter. I don't carry her car seat or her carrier on there just because then it takes away room from our other daughter. So I'll just put her on my lap or my wife, you know.
Right.
So we don't we don't use a carrier, but we also.
When I'm trying to.
Aren't stupid.
It's maybe that's all the parent. I mean, if you're gonna put your two-year-old on the back of a golf cart, I mean.
Right.
It's not gonna talk to you, but.
Yeah, and that kinda goes back to following the rules of the road, you know.
The only. Side by size, they come with seat belts, I'm pretty sure. But golf carts don't have seat belts per the ordinance. It's just, am I gonna stop having a two a two-month-old on his lap or not?
Right.
You know, I mean.
You know, it's just one of these little ones are just hanging in.
And it's.
That's uh that's just parenting. Nothing I can do about that. I recommend putting them in the front, but.
Where's the liability of it?
Golf carts don't have to have seat belts per the ordinance. They just.
Where does the liability fall? Does it fall with the city?
We're not having.
Or something happen no matter what on a golf cart.
I mean, it's it's something that the city wants with more like a screen problem or a sign down or something like that, but it's something you're pulling up.
You may have to have insurance.
Yes. Driver's license and insurance.
You get some credit for table on that.
I would I would suggest table on it just so we can make all the change. We can look over the committee meetings, make every change we want to there and then bring it to the next meeting.
Okay, discussion in action necessary on Sanford sewer system based to project items as part of thought. Uh, discussion in action necessary on back smaller division, subdivision. Grass got good.
Wasn't there supposed to be somebody that was supposed to be out there grading that, keeping it and everything, and they've already been paid for it?
No, they weren't paid for it.
Okay, because there's four big mounds of dirt out there.
Right. They they actually uh simply checked back for that part um because Mark said it was too late when you're familiar with it, but they were supposed to do this one.
I'm talking about last week that that's one of the reasons that he's really concerned about the couple pumps out there and grating down and.
Yeah.
So we. Or somebody playing glass.
Ooh, hopefully really do need to finish.
Because I thought I thought it was already supposed to have been done.
Okay, we more of us. Last.
Yes.
I don't think they came. We didn't come to a meeting to call there and say.
Yeah.
Mark Mark brought it and took it out because it's doing.
I'll think.
I think Don had one, but he didn't.
Uh, Mark.
Ben?
Yeah.
Yeah, we we seen it though. Everything from uh two or four stakes. Two lines now that Mark there's a rose all seen, denton's gone seated and all around. Did you even figure out what the line?
It changes.
Ammon is total. On power.
Yeah, we can't um. That's like a big. That's a huge.
That's something we're gonna have to consider. We're not Ammon's electrician grades. Yeah, I feel Mark does a lot of that too.
I don't know if this is open to public comments, but I don't see the point of having lights on out there at night for somebody to come check out a lot in the evening. It seems kinda like a waste of money, but that's my opinion.
I agree with it. I.
Does anybody know how much a month it costs to run them light?
Well, they were six hundred. Well, we didn't know exactly how long.
Right, because of the rates being changed, you don't know exactly that it's.
Crazy.
Couple hundred dollars.
We're also paying rent on them homes.
Right, yeah. And you have you can't keep it because that's in the contract. And that was only like six something or ten dollars a pole or something like that. And then maybe it's black and it's a launch and that's it.
I know the housing. They wanted to like a presentation where they have lights on. I don't think anybody had to do that much. We don't.
I don't think that there's that much. Um, I just think with all different places, uh electricity is supposed to be break down because they can't give you a breakdown of this is where it's at. It's all in one.
Can't try to.
No, because I talked with uh Ammon. Mark's talked with Ammon and you can't shut it.
That was a bundle man.
When we put them lots in, that was a bundle, including without.
Part of it was holes, part of that one of the electricity. They were gonna mostly in theory, most of the house is self-built and Ammon was gonna leave from this back. A percentage of all that project cost, but we still have to pay it upfront until.
Right.
And Ammon's not gonna pay it back until the house.
Well, yeah, they have to be broke and then important and something.
Speaking of that, there okay, this is something I thought of afterwards, would I wish I would have thought of beforehand. But we definitely have to start marketing it. And we missed out on a big opportunity with the slushy press and the class reunion. We went and had a sign or papers out there. There were plenty of people that came back here that was originally from here that then you didn't know it. It wasn't anywhere.
This is why I think since day one, you should not be running to the developer project to house it. So we're not marketers, not green estate developers. This is what you pay contractors and developers. That's why I. Since day one.
Can can that portion be put into including in this this money that was used with plenty of news for this subdivision? Can you you might be with that?
I don't.
Because we're trying to do something.
Well.
And Bradshaw would have been too.
I thought Rick Carter's supposed to be talking.
They they have another website. They made a video. I've seen it.
Problem is. Still more typically when you want to. I don't know. I I I don't have an issue with this. What I what I can say is day one, this is why you should not be. But if this one is too late to laugh, but I don't know. We wanna keep this dump of more and more and more money to.
But but. I don't see a doubt.
They just do an open house on all the lots. Have the real good open house.
Right, she's she made a video. But okay, those pamphlets, those packets that they had, who who paid for that?
I think part of it was AP's day and part of it was. I don't exactly.
Good.
I wasn't answering. Did I know anything here?
Don't think we did.
I mean, how many of those packets do we have?
Place of us.
Like, I'm just thinking, like, even a poster, like, I mentioned before how, you know, they were talking in Tamville about women's subdivision there. There even went and spoke to them about our subdivision. So maybe if we got more material out to other community.
Problem that I mentioned is who's gonna get it? Because if the housing thing was all the volunteer reason, almost most of them are no longer doing great and doing. Who from the city is your housing development rep? I don't know that anybody ever got affected to it. Everybody got appointed to this. So I I know I can't. I don't know how to answer that question because there's nobody really. It's either volunteer or nobody. And that was my question when I started this, I because I even said, what happens when the the volunteers can't sell it and you move on to something else? Who takes it?
I think that's the thing. The board probably needs to look more further into it. We've got to do something. In fact, it's a lot.
Ken, for one thing, I want people to come look at it, but it's been a mess.
I know. I agree. And I thought that I had a committee meeting and they need to decide too. How, I mean, fortunate.
He's gonna take.
Fortunate John noted for it. It's gonna have to be contained in a note. Is going are we going to?
These are all things that I've been asking all along. Did I say you're gonna know this? You're gonna take care of it? You're just gonna market it? You're gonna do all this work?
This is city owned property?
Yeah.
You have ring dollar.
Our board.
Well, we need a big board. It's failing.
Well, some of the board is changed. No, it's not necessarily this board, right. But it was.